...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our special school board meeting of July 30th. And we are at our public input. I do have one card. Mr. Taylor Smith. You are up, sir. If you want to come to this podium over here in three minutes to address the board. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Taylor Smith, and I work with Pinecrest Charter School. And I'm one of the actual, work as a vendor. I'm a developer. And we are here just to announce that finally we have our fully approved site plan for the Four Corners School Campus for Pinecrest. And Lake County approved it. We have all our permits in hand. And so we're going to close on the property in about six weeks. And that's always been our plan. We're not late. We just, more for information is to let you know, sometimes charter schools may not deliver on time or may not deliver at all. But we're excited. This is a $10 million project, and the growth spotter has been calling. We've been putting them off until we had our final approvals in hand. But we didn't want you to read about it in the newspaper. Thought I should come and give you an update directly. I know you're doing your budget tonight. And we met with staff last week. We met with Mr. Dodd and Mr. Mathias and wanted to meet every board member, just to give you an update. This is a charter you approved last year. And we delayed the opening for a year because of permitting. But we told you at the time. And so we're going to open on time, August of 19, with a capacity of 800 students. Our charter is 750 K8 Pinecrest Charter. And we're very excited. The facility is going to be very technology-rich. We're going to put a playground and recreational fields in the parking lot out front. Tear out the parking lot and install grass. So it's going to totally repurpose the property. For your information, if you don't know, it's the Wind Dixie that's been closed on US 27 at Woodcrest Way. It's about a seven and a half acre site in South Lake County. It's exactly where we've always planned it with, for the last year and a half. And we had to go through a major rezoning to allow educational use on the property. That's what took so long. But our funding's in place. Pinecrest is excited. We're outreach-ing to the community. And we look forward to collaborating with you on your planning of your 35 acres in the back, or your large parcel in the back, where we own the frontage road. We didn't mention this to you, Mark, but it was something that came up after. It's a private road that we're going to dedicate as a public road to Lake County as part of our plan. And that was all in collaboration so that you would have bus access and full access to your property from the north, from Woodcrest Way, parallel to 27. So that's just, again, we work with staff, and your staff works with the county. And all of this has been in the making for a year. But I just wanted to come and say thank you. As always, we're excited to be a partner with the county. We want to do everything we can to provide excellent choice, but also student station capacity where you need it. We don't want to go where you don't need it. Or I don't want to be involved in anything where you don't need it. So if anybody has questions or any comments, I'm available as always. And we're going to email you the site plan so that all board members have it. And we really think us opening two years ahead of your planned K8 opening may give you, we'd like to dialogue with you, for what that means. Because maybe, you know, you had to plan without us coming, knowing that we were coming. Now that we're coming, I think hopefully it gives you more tools in your toolbox to play with on, with your limited resources that you have to deploy around the county. So again, we're here. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. I am 3.01.
I think you recall that the letter of intent for sale or the purchase of the Dabney property came to us a few weeks ago. It has been reviewed by our attorney in negotiation with the gentleman. We now have the item on the agenda, ready for your approval for the intent of the sale of the property. So I'm recommending approval of item 3.01, the action item, the letter of intent for the sale and purchase of 910 East Dixie Avenue in Leesburg.
Subtle.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Burns, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Ward, you're on the budget.
As part of the budget, we also have the capital plan update. And so I think Kelly's going to start us off this afternoon.
Mr. Board Chair, board members. Melissa, thank you for the opportunity to review our draft capital plan.
There we go. Just a reminder, we have a couple of deadlines that we need to meet. We have, for our inter-local agreement with our local government partners on school concurrency, we provide them with a final draft or a relatively close draft for their comment and review by August 15. And we are supposed to adopt it by September 15. So it's just a quick reminder of our deadlines. We just turn it into the state by October 1st. Reminder of our revenue sources. Ad valorem is our most flexible money. It is our property tax collections. And we can use it for pretty much anything. It usually goes very quickly to transportation and maintenance. The impact fees can only be used for most student stations. And in this current draft that you'll see, it will basically pay for the Four Corners K8 and the Lake Manyola High School addition. And then the sales tax proceeds, the new collection began in January of this year. And we had committed to our voters that we would use that for reconstruction of nine schools, technology, infrastructure upgrades, and capital renewal. So basically, the plan that you have seen, and you will see, provides for fairly consistent funding for ongoing expenditures, some money for capital renewal. Am I too close or not close enough?
I don't know, something's...
And then it also calls for some major projects, the fully funding of Four Corners K8, the Lake Manyola High School addition, and the rebuilding of the Clermont K8 and the Fruitland Park Elementary School project. None of these are new. You've seen all of these. The Four Corners K8, we first put in the plan in 2014. And we've been rolling it forward consistently ever since. And the Clermont and Fruitland Park projects were part of our priority list that we gave to the voters back in, I don't know, probably 2014 or 15. And the Lake Manyola High School addition, I think it's been in the plan for a couple of years. I'm going to lean back and see if that works. So this is the plan that you're very familiar with. We have our revenue projections. The good news is that we are in better shape than we have been for, you know, quite a few years. So our income is up, our revenues are up. We have been working to identify carryover with finance. And so our carryover projections are fairly good. We're happy with them. The carryover of the sales tax includes $5 million from the previous sales tax collection and then $4 million that was collected since January. That's new sales tax. The capital reserve, I am going to recommend that we roll that back into our revenue. We had set that aside in 2012 when we saw that our debt service, our revenue was dropping. And we thought that our debt service may actually overtake our revenue. So we had set that aside. We're no longer in that position. I think in order to accomplish the projects that we want to accomplish, it's time to roll that back into our revenue projections. And so that just becomes money that we can spend. And that just went away. And that one, well, I don't think you can see it, but everybody else can. So our revenue, hopefully they'll get that back up. Our recurring expenditures, as I said, we've been in, we're in better shape than we have been for a while. So our buses and transportation, we're able to keep that consistent at $3 million. Our white fleet replacement, we're able to consistently fund that at $600,000 over the five years each year. And that brings you back to the point where you'll be able to, you get back to the point of replacing 10% of your fleet every year, especially in buses. And, you know, that's important for operating costs and for making sure that we have a nice, safe fleet on the road. One of the things that we've been able to do is fund maintenance at a much better level than we've been able to fund it for, I would say, probably eight or nine years. We used to fund it at a much higher level. We've had to cut back. And so this actually restores a lot of the maintenance funding, actually increases it a little bit. And so we'll be able to start taking care of some of that backlog of maintenance needs that we have. Roofs, chilers, some of those big expenses, hopefully we'll be able to start knocking off our list. Portable lease transfer is our cost for portables leasing. Capital school equipment, technology refresh, that's Dr. Gillis' money to replace some of our computers and make sure that we are up to date on that. Capital software transfer, all of these are fairly consistent ongoing expenditures that we've had. And we're just able...
Do you have a decrease, my, sorry?
Oh.
The $50,000 decrease from 1819 and 1820?
On...
Underestimated available projects of the bottom line and available...
Oh, it's, so that's actually, what happens in the first year of this is that we have a lot of money from the carryover. So that's added into the, let's actually go back to the page before that. So you'll see in 1819, you have those four lines that are highlighted in green. It's prior year carryover. So that's basically savings money that we're bringing over. So that makes your first year of revenue projections always much higher. Once we've spent a consistent amount of ongoing expenditures, then it leaves you a lot more money available in that first year. But then it gets slowly spent over the next couple of years. Or in this case, to some extent, the first year. Because then we, over that leaves us, as Dr. Gillis observed, 71 million for projects. We are programming the Cypress Ridge Cafeteria, which you've recreated. That's an expenditure for this year that comes out of the prior sales tax collection. So that's part of that $9 million rollover. The Four Corners K8, I would still professionally recommend that you build that school. I think that there is enough need to absorb both our school and the Pinecrest Four Corners charter. And I think that there are some needs that we have for serving an ESV population in that area that I think that we can serve there. I am recommending that we start funding our land acquisition budget again. We have not funded it in quite a few years. This is a fairly minimal funding, but I think it's something that we may need to start looking at some more. There are some sites that we're going to need. Probably a high school site in the Four Corners area at some point that we need to start looking for. And a middle school or elementary school site. It's basically just starting to look at some land banking for future sites. Worth is coming back. I'll tell you our concurrency review process. We are seeing a lot of growth. We're going to need a capacity, not necessarily so much in the next five years, but in the next 10 to 15 years. So we need to start looking for those sites now. Minor capital projects, we've been funding that for the last couple of years. We continue funding it. It's for projects that come up that we don't necessarily anticipate. I can't think of any examples right offhand, but I'm sure maintenance could tell you what they are. And then the technology, infrastructure upgrades, that's the digital classroom upgrades to allow students. As we go out, we have the Lake Manyola High School addition funded from impact fees. And then you'll see a new project, and I'm going to tell you, that's a fairly tentative project. The Taverri's Relief School is funded in 2223. If you remember our timeline, we had two new capacity projects, a South County Elementary School and a Mid County Elementary School. They were always kind of on a need basis, kind of side by side. When we had looked at the numbers, it looked like Taverri's Relief was going to probably overtake that. We know Taverri's Elementary is overcrowded, Treadway as well. However, in discussions with the Pinecrest folks the last week, they are very solid on their Taverri's Pinecrest school. If and when that opens, then we probably will not need that Taverri's Relief school for quite a while. And so this would go back to going to a South County Elementary School. Probably South County, maybe North County. And so this is kind of, I want to make sure that you realize it's tentative. This is not solid. So it may change in the next year or so as we move forward.
But could it also change from an elementary to a high school instead?
It could if that capacity, if we see that capacity need. High schools, you know, it would only be partially funded if they're a high school. And high schools are difficult because they're so big and they're so expensive. So we would be monitoring that to see really what that next week is going to be. Charter schools, kind of, you know, we always like to think that planning is nice and black and white, but it's, there's a lot of shades of gray in there. So charter schools add some different factors to it that we have to monitor.
Speaking of high schools, I'd like to talk a little bit about that Lake Manyola High School addition. Now, looking at the flow of cash here, it appears as if we might be able to push that project a year earlier. Right? Could we?
We could.
I wanted to ask that.
Actually, I ran that as a test, just to see whether that would work or not. And if that's the worst desire, we could actually pull that project further a year.
The Manyola High School addition, so if we pulled out a year forward, then that could be ready as early as 2021 versus 22, right?
Yes.
And with the growth in Manyola, the Turnpike Exchange there, and Jim is knows, based on our experience from having rezoned to that school, we know many folks want to go there. So it seems like we'd have no problem filling the capacity even through choice versus attendance boundaries.
And this, why are our opening times, like for Fruitland Park and the Clermont Elementary Middle School, so, like, on the very first slide, I think you had shown us 2021 for the Fruitland Park school. And then that takes three years to build. That seems like a long bill.
On the first slide?
On like, well, we don't have it, but you listed a first slide, and I remembered it from like the previous year.
Oh, that's the funding.
Yeah, like, yeah, it's for Fruitland Park and rebuild.
That's when the funding is available.
So if it's...
And the opening date is just to accommodate the time it takes to do the construction.
Three years?
Well, the bulk of the money is in...
Well, the funding is generally considered to be at the end of that year.
Okay, so that's 22, so they're building in two years.
And with Fruitland Park, it's just going to be, you know, I'd say 2024, but it could be sometime in the middle of 2023, 24, because it's a replacement school. Basically, we could open it anytime during the year when it's done. It's just that there's a lot of factors in moving kids around on that school phasing. It's not an instantaneous project.
What's that? And what about Clermont?
The Clermont K8, it's the same thing. It's, you know, it's a project that's going to take some time.
So it starts in '20?
It's fully funded in 2020, 2021.
Did y'all sort out that we could do the, put a park on the new, on the vacant land?
That is going to be something that's going to take time to work out. I can't tell you right now that we're going to be able to do that.
Yeah.
I have had discussions with DOE staff, but I will tell you that it's, there's a whole process that we have to...
Do you, you're trying to get the release of that front building?
We'd have to, we would have to have that released because it is collateral with for the leasing project for the program for the participation. And it will not be paid off until 2028.
Have we considered putting our alternative school there? Did we consider it? At Fruitland Park? Yeah, that would be, yeah, at the Fruitland Park.
At the existing Fruitland Park campus?
Yeah.
We haven't had any discussion about that. That's...
I'll probably just sell it.
Well, the problem is we can't get them, as long as it's new property, we can't get the ability to build on the old, I mean, on a different site, we have to build on the same site, which creates all sorts of infrastructure problems.
We have a building that's collateralized by a bond that isn't paid off. And that's, we're trying to see if we can move that bond, right? Which seems like, that seems like easy for me.
Well, beyond that, there's actually, we have to get education survey. We have a problem with education.
Yeah, that's right.
That's...
Yeah, we're trying to remember it. It's an eligible... They have to come in and do the sound.
Well, we are, we have a casalbi, a draft casalbi on, but of course it doesn't offer us to replace it. So, and we probably would not have permission from the year to replace that. But we're demolishing it.
So are we trying or are we not trying to change location? Have we completely, we're like, can't do it?
We are exploring that possibility.
Yeah, but this came out like two years ago.
Yeah, this is like, on ongoing two-year...
There is, but I had DOE come out when they came, and they basically told me that they did not think that it would be possible. But we, we always...
So can we repurpose it? I mean, that's, that was...
And that may be a possibility that we could explore. I mean, if we can repurpose it for another use, then that adds up to a different project. And that may be a possibility to rework under different circumstances.
And you're discussing the site that was, not the old Fruitland Park buildings, just the buildings that were refurbished and you were building Fruitland Park.
There's a brand out, right?
Right. In terms of building it for... That's the building we're talking about?
In 2007.
Right.
I think that we can easily get casalbi approval to demolish the other ones. But that 2007, we just won't get casalbi approval for it. And so we'll have to figure out some way to accomplish that.
I want to speak about the Four Corners K8 at 33 million. And also recognize that the strength of the board and paying off our debt is by, for the first time ever, we're back at the dinner table instead of eating scraps. So well done, I think. But 33 million dollars, it could move other projects up. If we have, we just got the report, it's going to open with 700 and something stations. You have here you need 1,200. I think you told me the other day you need 1,900.
We have, we have 1,130 reserve seats in the residency. We are already underpowered, overcapacity in that area. Sawgrass Bay has a couple hundred students overcapacity, and that's with the expansion that we built. And then there are 1,130 reserve seats. And that's just at Elementary School. The middle school, we're not district-wide or even South County-wide. We're not necessarily overcapacity by that extent. But at middle school, the issue becomes vocational. So we have 700, almost 800 middle school students who live within Sawgrass Bay's attendance zone. Basically, that Four Corners area between, we're bussing them to the hill right now. And so between our proposed 400 capacity and their 250, roughly, capacity.
It just seems to me, it doesn't make sense, and I've spoken about it, so I'm sorry, I just can't get there. But I would encourage us to work with Pinecrest and support whatever efforts we need. And it's your district.
Yeah, it is, it is. And I remember that this conversation last year, and a lot of debates rolled around, what are we doing with the Four Corners area? Because in reality, at the time, we needed to build both schools on that site. We couldn't afford to do that. We needed to build the K5. We needed to build the 68. We said, we've only got enough money to build one school. So we kind of put that K8 in this plan as a placeholder. Pinecrest comes along, and they're going to provide some relief. But that's not enough relief. And the other thing to consider is that many, gosh, a few hundred kids from that area currently, we are bussing into Osceola County to go to that charter school. So once they open up, and all of a sudden they've got a charter school in their backyard, why would they leave our school district to go to another school district for a charter school? And they've got it right there. So I think that a portion of their school is going to be getting those students back from Osceola. So, I mean...
But wouldn't it make some sense to see if Pinecrest would do a K5, for example? Whatever the demographic is, because it's different per grade. And then we build, rather than be direct competitors, K8 to K8, that they could put more emphasis in certain grades, and we'd pick up a difference? I don't know.
So you're saying on our property, then we'll just build the 68 now?
Perhaps. And if you build a 68 for less than 33 million, then you maybe can get some relief, some use, get...
Manyola.
You get the high school, possibly.
Well, already we can move the high school sooner.
What is the transportation at Pinecrest? Do they provide transportation?
So I posed this question in our meeting the other day. That's something that I'm still under consideration.
Okay. So that's a big concern at this point for me, just thinking about having a charter school that's there, that's a nice, new charter school, but it's only going to send people whose parents can drive them to the charter school. So it's going to leave a certain portion of our population at our public school that isn't going to have the opportunity for the relief at a school that we're waiting to have an area to. That concerns me greatly because it's going to not serve a very big demographic that we serve.
But I think they're open to discuss transportation also.
But we can't make them, and I agree, I agree. And I see that they're, I get it. Like, I hear what you're saying. I hear, I hear it. And it's really easy to think, wow, they're going to have a school right there. Let's just add on to that. But at the same time, I just, if we can say that all they want, but what happens if the next year their revenue or their capacity isn't there, and they say, okay, we just can't afford the funding, the transportation anymore, and then they've cut the means off of a meaningless population of students who have double, working parents at home, who don't have the support, and can't get to those individuals and get that kind of support there. I think the ESV population is a concern, and you've spoke about it as well.
Sawgrass Bay, do they have 11 self-contained units, is that right?
The ESV staff, in the meeting, they proposed 11 self-contained units at the New Four Corners.
At the New Four Corners. That's in addition to what already exists at Sawgrass Bay.
Well, some of that would increase, some of Sawgrass Bay, but it would...
That's huge, well...
Right now, Sawgrass Bay's capacity, even though, you know, on paper, it's a fairly good capacity, Right now, Sawgrass Bay's capacity, even though, you know, on paper, it's a fairly good capacity, the way that the program capacity for Sawgrass Bay is submitted in number. I actually, even though we're saying this would be a 1,200 student station, or 1,200 capacity school, I actually anticipate that our capacity would be less than, than 1,200 as of that ESE population.
And we, we talked about the scheduling conflicts. I mean, I've heard about how they can't get all the kids in the cafeteria, and we can't get all these kids at the E, and the safety concerns and the person population, because Sawgrass Bay is so.
It's huge.
Right, 1,400.
I was going to mention about the ESE population as well.
Well, even, even at Sawgrass, if you look at, 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 just all, all globally, they have whatever, 30 quarters or something. That if we could begin to schedule in brick and mortar for that school, that, I just hate throwing 33 million dollars away.
But we don't want to.
Don't throw it away, don't misunderstand.
But we don't want to expand that school, make it even larger.
I agree.
1,400.
If you were to break and mortar, it was affordable, what I'm saying.
No, but the.
Yeah, but the school already has 1,400 kids, so you have permanent capacity.
The way a elementary's functions.
I mean, 2,000 kids, that's, that's too big for our nature, way too big.
Well, and I have some concerns that if we put an ESE, a large ESE population as a public school, one block from Pinecrest, and Pinecrest comes out and shoots an A, and our public school is a C or a D.
That could, that could very well happen if we let Pinecrest just go, they can, and it's cool right there, and the participation, the participation that is able to drive their kids to and from the school could have that same impact as opposed to what we have at Sawgrass Bay, that would be trying really hard to work with, and our teachers are working their hands off.
Right.
So I can back.
Oh, I heard the professional opinion based on the growth projections that we need both schools.
Yeah, my opinion hasn't changed.
So I think the advantage of this is that it buys us time. No longer are we in the dire situation where we have to build both schools this year. And now, building one K-8, in addition to their K-8, buys us some time. We don't have to immediately put up a second school on that site.
We'll still be bussing, the other factor that, you know, we didn't mention was that with the additional middle school at Minneal, basically, our middle school capacity in the South End is sufficient for a while. We will still be bussing some kids from the Four Corners to Windy Hill, but those could be the students who choose that traditional middle school experience versus a K-8 experience. So, you know, we have Sawgrass Bay, which is a traditional elementary school, and so some of those students could be choosing to go to Windy Hill. We'll still be taking some kids to Windy Hill, but because of that additional middle school capacity at Minneal Charter, we won't necessarily need that, a full middle school for a credit line.
And we wouldn't want to ask to see if the Pinecrest folks would build and do some type of land lease on our property and build to the correct capacity, one school.
I, I, I'm not in favor of that, and here's where I approach that, because at some point, we're going to need a second school on that property. And because we have, would have both schools on the same property, and if we're operating both, and there's some efficiencies gained, and that some of the facilities then become able to be shared, such as, right, parking lots?
Parking lots, fields.
Fields.
There's actually an example in Orange County, Sunridge Elementary and Middle School, they actually have a shared cafeteria. They have, they block it off with walls, but they have a shared kitchen.
So if, so if they've got a school on our property, and we're going to now build our second school at some point, we're tiptoeing around them on our property.
We did that with Taverries back in the day, and that was not perfect either. And they were, they were both our schools.
Two, two public schools.
Yeah, we had Taverries, Millhouse, Taverries High on the same campus, and Taverries hated it. It wasn't good for the kids either, the little ones were bullied.
Not when I went either. I was on that campus too.
We, we had K through 12 when I was there, and we all used the same cafeteria.
You know, the, the thing to consider is that land is so hard to come by down there. I mean, we had, look at what we paid for this piece of property to begin with, and Mr. Kagan still calls it a bargain sale, and gosh, when I bumped into him a year ago, he regretted selling it to us for that price. He wanted to charge more, and also get impact fee waivers for his partner comp taxes. So to, to try to get more land down there that we know we're going to need eventually, I, I just don't want to give a piece of that to somebody else when we know we need it for ourselves.
Definitely, I think we should give more land, sound like.
But I've heard something that you made a comment about the middle school, and we still would be bussing some to Windy Hill Middle from there that would not, because they choose to go to Windy Hill?
Well, it's, it's, so there's about 800 middle school students right now in that area. Between our capacity of, let's say, a little bit under 400, and Pinecrest's capacity of, which is what they say, 250, that's 650. So there are still students that will not be accommodated in the middle school. It's not a full middle school's work. So there will still be students who would be going to other Windy Hill.
That brings me to the next question then.
Why do we have to do that?
If we do that, are we actually hurting our middle school, middle school students by not having all the accessible, different categories of things that they would be able to get at, at a larger middle school?
You mean like sports?
So, you know, our middle school, the, the K-8 that we have programmed, our educational specifications call for, you know, a lot of the, they have science labs, they have, they have a band room, a nice band room. Now, some of the clubs, we probably, you know, that's a curriculum question, not necessarily a planning question from a planning standpoint, and we'll have the facilities for that.
Like culinary arts and, and different things that I think are there, they would have that available.
No, we probably would have more of a technology exploration lab rather than a culinary, a full culinary arts program.
But that's what we.
Probably similar to the school in size and offering, regardless of the intent and. Yeah, a little bit smaller, a little bit smaller.
You mentioned, you mentioned the middle school gave up their culinary program and did away with everything, had it renovated, and now the principal's there, and was like, why would we do something like that? You know? Because it's another program there for the students to be able to, to get. I mean, so when, when we look at this K through eight, this is what I would be looking at also through that, is how much of this are we taking away from our students that they would have to go to a larger middle school to get what they're, they're designing? So.
Maybe that's something that we're going to do eventually, but just to make sure that we're, that's what they're, they're saying off the top of their head.
Isn't that more of a competition by definition? I mean, so why would they purpose on that? It's kind of against the philosophy.
When I, when I recall this conversation prior, I almost felt like that we were saying, yes, that, that there would be students from the Four Corners area who would still have to go to Windy Hill. Since we'd be running buses that way anyway, if there were students who wanted to opt away from the K-8.
And that's what I meant by this, who choose to go.
So they can still choose to go to Windy Hill.
Right, there are students who are still going to want the full middle school experience, or if there's something that, you know, they're very particularly interested in, that we can't offer at a K-8, and, you know, the Windy, the Windy Hill is still an option.
Windy Hill is a, are we looking at an attendance boundary? That they would have to get themselves there, the students?
No.
Whether a bus by, a school that we, a reigning school we're building, it's a thing we would build.
They could have been on enough capacity.
Because there would be enough capacity.
They need to make a bigger K-8.
But, but building a whole middle school is, is too much.
Is it 40,000 for a whole middle school?
40 million.
No, no, no.
40 million, sorry.
No, it's, it's too much capacity, because we don't have much capacity for a whole middle school.
We don't have the capacity.
No, we, we don't, that, if we were to build a full middle school, build a full 6A right now on the Four Corners property, between their, their K-8, we'd end up with an abundance of capacity, right?
Right, and, and yet we still would not necessarily have an elementary school capacity.
But that's what I'm saying, if they didn't build a K-8, but they build a K-5, and we did a 6A, wouldn't that make some sense?
Well, there's a, there's a, a K-8, I was surprised, can you speak to the K-8 school grade advantage? Because there is one.
There is one.
There's a big K-8 school grade advantage. I, I can't, I don't know exactly how it works out, but K-8 is better.
It has to do with the, the number of points possible, and how those are distributed amongst the K-8 schools. I don't know exactly the, the numbers.
So suddenly, civics would now be counted in your K-5 average because it's K-8, because it's, it's one grade for the whole school. So civics is an exam that schools should easily pass with greater than 62% efficiency, which is of course the average, all you need for an A. So you got civics factored in there, the students who are taking it up to the one or the eighth grade level, well, they're going to, of course, pass that exam no problem. So once again, that helps inflate the K-5 portion, I mean, because that's all absorbed in the K-8. So that's the grading advantage. From a business model standpoint, though, they want to retain their kids through 6, 7, and 8, right? That, well, one of the popular reasons that we found students were leaving through Cypress Ridge was that they don't have the 6A portion. Same thing, we need a little charter coming forward to us, right? They wanted to expand to 6A, because once students are in there and part of the culture, then they want to continue on. So we're, we're saying, mess up your culture, change your business model, don't do 6A, so that way we can get all your students.
Yeah, but the thing is, is the advantage of the 6A you said is the, is the middle school raise helping.
When you're in the K-8.
And we're saying, give, I'm saying, give the elementary kids the K-5 that to Pinecrest.
Then they lose a grading advantage.
Then they lose a grading advantage.
They lose theirs. They, they lose their grading advantage, they, they get the advantage when they're K-8. K-5, they, they lose the advantage if they were to change from K-8 to K-5. But I don't know that that's the biggest issue they're looking at. I'm sure it's a business model standpoint of retaining those kids for the extra three years, part of this culture. That, you know, it's the same reason.
But I also will tell you that, that in the conversations I had, that they're willing to work with us, though. And because there's no, it isn't even, it is just so odd to me to think about, I block away, we have two competing schools, it just is odd to me, I can't.
Well, we've done that already with, for my elementary, I mean, they're not.
No, no, I'm talking.
I know it's a block away, but they're pretty darn close.
It's not a block.
I'm going to go ahead and remind you of that, we got to find a good meeting. And this is really a good conversation, so Superintendent suggested that if you want to continue, right, that in the meantime, if you guys would get together, Kelly, and just discuss everything, and not that we can't, obviously, we all need to have some more dialogue, that we can make a special meeting on the workshop dates.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
So that we can continue the conversation, so.
I'd also like to bring up the, in the proposed sales tax capital plan, after Eastus Elementary School, you have Kurt Wright Center, Oakheart, Leesberg High School, K-8, Treadway, then you have Cypress Ridge. So I don't, this, this Taverries relief?
That is a different source of funding. The Taverries relief school, it would be new capacity, or whatever replaces the Taverries relief school. It's new capacity, it's paid for with impact fees. We cannot, any of those projects that you just mentioned, we cannot use impact fee money on.
So we have to create a.
No, sales tax, that's a sales tax.
No, we can't use impact fee money on those, they have to be sales tax or ad valorem projects. So I can't, i- if we don't build this school, it doesn't move Fruitland Park forward, it doesn't move Cypress Ridge forward, it doesn't move any of those other projects forward.
Like the Kurt Wright Center, has been there since 1950.
Right.
Like, why can't we just build a new building?
Because it's, we have to have the correct source of funding for it.
Because that wouldn't be new capacity, it's replacing capacity.
That would be, that would be replacement capacity. Yes. We cannot use impact fees, impact fees are paid by developers to accommodate growth that they, that they are.
We can't say they haven't grown since 1950?
No.
We're not adding seats.
We're not adding seats.
I think Kurt Wright's falling down.
We're not adding.
So the K through eight, then we're talking about a Claremont location, that would be.
Impact fees.
Impact fee?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, Claremont K would be a sales tax price.
Replacing seats.
Okay.
It's replacing seats, right. On Fruitland Park, we're proposing a slight increase, like 50 additional seats, and so we could pay for those out of impact fees, but that's it. So, right, maybe a million dollars worth of that, but none of those other projects.
Okay, so I have, I respectfully can't follow the conversation. Not on what you were going to say, we only have 20 minutes for the budget.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I would be happy to speak to any of the, the, please.
I want to bring up the presentation. Good afternoon, today we'll do the massive budget presentation, a special meeting. I'll go over some of the slides for the public, and so, and so, and I appreciate you guys coming in. We had a lot of things we shared in the office with board members just last week. And we're putting more and more documents on the website, so there'll be more information coming. One of the changes in statutes for next year is, is that we have to actually include some plain language documents and comparisons, and starting in 2019. We're already working on some of those documents and trying to incorporate them into this year's presentations. One, because it does make it easier for the public and the board members to understand, and two, we're just trying to prepare for next year, so we're not recreating everything new next year. So the first slide. Sorry. Uh, the first slide is the, this statute that covers the, what you have to adopt today, the tentative budget. Um, and the, and the main, each main point, section one, is that you have to receive and examine the tentative budget submitted by the school district superintendent, and it shall require such changes to be made, in keeping with the purpose of the school code, as may be interested of, of the school program in the district. So you guys have to adopt tentative budget. Um, sorry. Slide number two, basically, that essentially says the school, school board must adopt a tentative budget that is balanced. In other words, your revenues and your expenditures, at the end of the day, you have to have a fund balance that you cannot run a deficit budget, such as the federal government's allowed to. The proposed budget shall include an amount for the local required effort for current operation. The bill that you guys will pass today, the required local effort is required by the statute, and this, this right here says it again, it reiterates the point that you don't have an option to lower or increase the required local effort taxes. Um, and then again, bullet point number four, basically, the budget of each of this part thereof shall balance, and there again, it's just restating the fact that you have to balance the budget that you approve. This is the trim calendar, the new one over at the last budget workshop. Just, just to update, the July 23rd, the board approved the advertising of the tentative millage and tentative budget as part of our scheduled board meeting. Tuesday, July 24th, the district submitted a tentative millage and tentative budget for advertising to the Daily Commercial. It ran this last Friday. Today, we're presenting, discussing the tentative millage and tentative budget in the special school board meeting. At 5:01, the board will hold a public hearing on the tentative millage and budget to give the public an opportunity to come in and speak. And then after that, the board will approve the tentative millage and then the budget in two separate resolutions. And then Monday, September the 10th, 2018, at 5:30, the board will hold a public meeting to present the final millage and budget during a special board meeting. Following the public hearing, the board will adopt the final millage and budget. I wanted to include a proposed 2019-20 budget process timeline. There's been a couple of concerns, and I completely understand why, about not enough information getting to the board members in a timely manner this year to make good decisions. And we did the best we could to get as much information in front of you, apologize for that. But I also wanted to talk about what I believe we should be doing throughout the rest of the year for 2019-20. The budget process doesn't necessarily start in June and July, when the trim process starts, it really starts far in advance. As you can see, the October should be a workshop for the board superintendent to discuss the priorities for 2019-20. And then the allocation committee meeting meets and to discuss any necessary changes or proposed changes to the allocations. January workshop would be changes to the allocation formulas, discuss it with the board, so they can make changes and make approval about. February, the FTE counts come out, and that's mainly what drives the allocation formulas. March, allocation meeting with the schools and departments, the May workshop, the legislative session update, Florida retirement system update, employee health insurance update, and the school and department allocations. June workshop, the school and department budgets and five-year facility work plan, and then July will be in the trim process. Um, this again, the each school, this is the statute, each district school board shall post on its website a plain language version of each proposed tentative and official budget, which describes each budget in terms that are easily understandable to the public. And that's what we've been working on this last week, and we are also working on some more plain language documents to add to it following tonight's meeting. Um, this is a tentative millage for 2018-19, this is what was advertised. There's a 4.1070 mill for the required local effort, a 0.748 mill for discretionary millage, a 1.5 mill for maximum capital outlay millage, for a total of 6.3550 mills. And again, for a homeless school tax will value of $125,000 and a homestead exemption, the homeowner would pay $635.50 in taxes for education. This slide shows the rollback mill. This slide shows the rollback millages as computed. The rollback millages is the millage that would apply to earn the same revenue, if we're going to earn the same revenue as last year, what would we apply to this year's school taxable value to come up with the same amount? For the required local effort, it's 4.0843. Discretionary millage would be a .7015, and the capital outlay millage is a 1.4067, for a total rollback millage of 6.1925. And because our tentative billage of 6.3550 mills exceeds a rollback millage of 6.1925, we had to advertise a notice of tax increase. And this is just the proposed tax increase that was advertised last Friday in the newspaper. And you'll see that this year's proposed tax levy is 1.47, or, excuse me, $147 million, but we're only allowed to budget 96% of that. So, that's what lists size for us to show what the 96%. And you can see a comparison of 2018-19 to 2017-18, and the differences between the tax levies. This was the summary of the budget summary that was advertised in Friday's newspaper. You can see the revenues, the beginning fund balances, the expenditures that are in the budget, and then the transfers out, the ending fund balances, and the total amount budgeted. We do have an update from this. And in this process, you advertise a tentative, and you approve the tentative budget. However, between now and the final, we have options to update the budget, to amend that budget, and at the final, you'll adopt the amended final budget. The only restriction is, is we cannot increase our millages, which are set by statute anyway, so we wouldn't be able to increase them. But we can make changes and updates as final numbers come in for the end of the year, and as we get additional numbers for some other, like our capital outlay debt service from the state. We haven't got the numbers yet, so we will be updating that soon. One of the updates that we did have to do, and we made subsequent to this advertising, is we had to record a $2.3 million adjustment to the general fund for health insurance costs. We got in our June claims, and it was more than what we had budgeted, therefore, we had to make, we had to increase the expenditure there. So, that does two things. It lowers the beginning fund balance for 2018-19 for the budget, and also, we have to increase our expenditures for the same. So, this slide here shows the preliminary 2018, because we still are finalizing the 2018 year for actual, the total revenues of $312 million, total expenditures of $322 million, 11.9 million for the transfer end, which was less than the $15 million that was budgeted. And then, you've got a net change in fund balance of increased 1.9 billion. So, the beginning fund balance is 11.1, the ending fund balance is $13 million. Of that $13 million, the important factor is, is what do you use to determine your fund balances available? And you have $1.4 million, which is non-spendable, which is mainly your inventory. You have $2 million that's restricted, which is mainly your categorical programs for the state. You've got 1.9, or, excuse me, you've got $193,000 assigned, and then, you've got 10.9 that's unassigned. Your assigned and your unassigned are the numbers that you combine together to determine your fund balance ratio. So, right now, we're looking at a 3.35 fund balance ratio for the end of 2018. So, the total revenues for the tentative 2019 budget is $322 million. The revised expenditures that include the changes for the health insurance that just occurred is $333.9 million. A transfer in, budgeted transfer in of $12.3 million, which leaves you a net change in fund balance for 2019 of a positive $605,000, excuse me, $605,000, and a beginning fund balance of $13 million. So, your ending fund balance, as adjusted for your tentative 2019 budget, would be $13,687. We don't go in at this point in time and try to project what the fund balance ratio would be, because we don't know what's going to happen between now and the end of the year on how, the ratio of how much we spend, that's the assigned and unassigned versus the restricted. So, but you can see, it's close. It is close. And then, finally, the last thing I want to show is the district budget website. We put the link of the website up there. And then, on that website, we currently have the proposed budget of revenue, the tentative budget comparison, the school allocation summary comparisons, the current FEFP calculation, the school-based budget comparison, and the department staffing plan comparison. All of these, we've redone, we've tried to clean them up, and documents that are a lot more easier to read than what we've seen in the past. The documents that were reviewed by the board, by the public in the past, were good documents, they were accurate, there's nothing wrong with them, but they had a lot of technical stuff with them, they had a lot of arrows pointing here and highlights there. So, we really just tried to put some very simple comparisons out for the public, so they can go in and look and see, like, the, per, the school-based budget comparisons or the school allocation summaries have the FTE information between last year and this year, and then the number of allocations. So, someone can go in and really dig into that detail if they like. That's the conclusion of the presentation. If there's any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to.
Board members?
I haven't been able to review this, I can't vote for it.
We're not, we're not voting today.
Good, because I haven't been able to review it, so I can't ask any questions. I have no information.
You said we're not voting today?
Not on this overall document, we're doing our trim.
Are we just voting on trim? Because that was my understanding.
Yeah, there is a tentative budget, but as he was saying, we won't adopt the final budget until after we...
So, are we voting on the tentative budget?
We are voting on the tentative.
I can't vote, I can't, I can't support it without having a chance to look at it. I'm sorry. Chat.
Well, that would be in the next meeting.
Oh, right, we don't have time to chat.
We have about five minutes for any questions that we have currently. Mr. Ward has made himself available for individual board member meetings for you to sit down and go through it in detail. I know that many of you already have done that, so I'd encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to do that, or if you have additional questions to follow up with him, you're not voting on the final budget at this time. And as he said, when he started the presentation, any changes in the movement of funds from one category to the other is possible between now and the final, we just can't adjust the millage, was his only point in that.
If I may?
Yes.
Board members, what you're voting on tonight on the tentative, there's two important parts that you're voting on. You're voting on your millages, which is, which is this part here. The required local effort set by the state, discretionary millage is .748. If you vote any, you can't vote more than that. If you vote less than that, you lose additional state funding, you lose the recalibration between the schools, and then, you've got the one and a half mills for your capital outlay, which is the maximum. You can't vote anything more than one and a half. You could vote less if you wanted to, however, you don't have sufficient funding for the capital program now, so I don't understand why you would want to vote less. So, that is one, that's the main thing that you're really voting on tonight, that's very important. This here, which is the budget summary which was de-advertised, the main thing is, is down in the far right-hand corner, you'll see 601-695-485. There's no possible way that that number can change without adjusting your revenues across the top. And the main thing is, is we can adjust the revenues across the top between now and the final, but we cannot change that millage. So, you know, I'm not trying to convince anybody to try to vote for something that they're not comfortable with, but there's really not a whole lot of choice in impact on what you're voting for this afternoon in your tentative, because your rates are set by your millages, your other revenues are historical, or they're set by your local, or your state, your FEFP funding. And if you vote anything less than your required local effort, you're going to lose that. And so, everything else just falls into place and can be moved around any way you choose between now and the final budget.
And the timing of the vote is based on the statute of 5:01. That's why it was so tight with the timing of the discussion, so that's in statute, we have to do it for 5:01 today.
The vote on the full budget, on the full budget or the millage?
On the, on the, go ahead, sorry.
Millage. I have no problem with voting on the millage.
And the tentative budget amount? Because that's based on the revenue for the millage.
But we don't have to vote on the tentative budget amount today, correct, Karen? Just the millage.
The number that's in the second resolution that y'all will be addressing tonight is the overall total budget number. That's that 601, six, I can't read it from this far.
So, I think, if I'm trying to interpret correctly, it seems to me that the struggle is how that 601 is spent.
It's not the amount.
So, obviously, the amount we're good with, because that's, that's the, derives from the millage, which is, of course, by statute. But the categories in which that 601 ends up, I guess, is that, that's your question.
Right, and I haven't had a chance to even look at it yet.
And may I, and may I, it's...
And I know, I missed a phone call, but...
That's, that's okay. It's a simple, the basic accounting formula is simple. You have beginning fund balance plus your revenues, and that's your total available. And then, you have your expenditures and your ending fund balance. If you increase revenues, it'll increase your fund balance. If you increase expenditures, it'll decrease your fund balance. As long as your 601-695 pretty much stays the same, and you don't change your millages between now and the final, you can make adjustments up and down all you need and see necessary.
And Mr. Ward, didn't you go, we went over the different departments. We've already gone through several of these pieces. I know that we've kind of adapted to that somewhat over the course of our first couple of years on the board, that we've seen where our different departments at the district level have done their cuts and where they're spending their money. We've seen the schools, and where they've done the cuts and the allocations, and where there's, you know, those types of things. It just hasn't been, like, the entire, the thing in its entirety, you've seen chunks and pieces over the course of the last couple of months.
I think that's part of the problem, though, is that we...
Of course it is.
We see things in little bits, we never see everything together.
Right, but that's, that's something we've been asking for, though.
Well, last, last year and the year before, it was more comprehensive, where we saw more, because we need to see all the pieces and parts. I've already spoken about that. So, I don't, can I ask one little quick question?
Yes, please.
I keep coming up with 3.5. What am I missing? You have 3.35 for our reserve.
Where?
The fund balance ratio.
Hundred percent?
Yeah. Am I, am I including something that shouldn't be there?
When you, like, take 96...
So, I...
When you take 96 and divide it into 601?
No, 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 last, last year, preliminary 2018 budget.
I very well could have, that could be a typo.
It would be the assigned, well, not assigned, divided by...
Well, I would have the unassigned, Kelly would use the unassigned, right?
You'd use assigned and unassigned. Because you have the discretion to change your assigned to the .10.
It's like 11.1.
Okay, I'm not going. We got, we're ready.
We've got two minutes, so...
We have two minutes, so we're ready.
No, well, we have one minute now before we have to start the next meeting. So, I'm going to ask that you defer your comments, Superintendent, and I, and Elizabeth, deferring comments to the next meeting. Okay, so, we will go ahead with no objection and close this meeting. The media's turned.
I would like more time than salt.
Sorry.
This meeting is a public hearing of the School Board of Lake County, Florida, for the adoption of the tentative millage rates and the tentative budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. Superintendent, please read the statement required on the millage for the record.
The first issue to be discussed is the rollback rate. The rollback rate is defined as the millage rate necessary to generate the same amount of money that was raised the prior school year, but using the new property values after adjusting for new construction. The total millage to be levied is greater than the rollback rate by 6.62%.
Two, two point six.
2.62%. The purposes for which ad valorem tax revenues are increasing is to fund the general operating and capital needs of the district.
This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning this increase? Okay, at this time, the CFO will answer any questions regarding the trim process from the board if requested.
Can you speak to the fact that we've got access and no choice in accepting this? Otherwise, we do not get a full funding. I would not.
Yes, ma'am, here. Would we have to? As part of the FEFP program in the state of Florida, which funds all school districts, they have a piece, what they call the local portion or the required local effort. That rate is set by the state. They do a statewide average, per se, across all of the school districts, and then, they come back and individually determine ours based on our school taxable value and the amount that needs to be raised. It is adjusted each year slightly, that's what the .007 was, but it is set by the state, and if we do not raise, if we raise more or less either way, then it jeopardizes all of our FEFP funding, which is the state support portion of that funding, which is significant to us. Then, you have the discretionary, and although it is discretionary, the board can vote less than the .748, or zero at all, none at all. It is equalized across the state, so you would not only lose the tax income, but you would lose some additional state dollars, too. So, there's no real benefit, you know, in doing that, other than if you didn't need the money, obviously. And then, you have a one and a half mill for capital outlay, which is the maximum. You could do less than that if you wanted to. It used to be two mills, it got rolled back to a one and a half mill. However, because of your obligations and your certificate of participations that you guys have, you, that, that's what pays a significant portion of that, and it's that revenue's pledged. You would not want to lower that 1.5 mill by anything, because it would throw off all of your bond people. They would not be...
We wouldn't be able to pay a debt.
Correct. So, I'm not sure if I answered just specifically.
Yes, you did beautifully, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I recommend that the board adopt Resolution 2018-02, Determining Tentative Millages to Be Levied for the Fiscal Year 2018-19. Included are the required local effort, including prior period funding adjustment millage of 4.107 mills, basic discretionary of 0.748 mills, and capital outlay millage of 1.5 mills, for a total of 6.355 mills. Revenue is generated by this levy total, general operating of $108,140,556, capital outlay of $33,411,88, for a total of $141,551,644.
I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation.
Someone, say it.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the tentative millage rates? Okay, seeing none, is there any further discussion with the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Superintendent?
I recommend that the board approve Resolution 2018-03, Adopting the Tentative Budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year in the amount of $601,695,485.
May I have a motion for the superintendent's recommendation of the resolution?
Someone, say it.
Great, this is a public hearing. Does anyone address, wish to address the board concerning the tentative budget? Seeing none, board members, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Well, I'd like to throw a couple of things out there. I've had the benefit this week of getting a lot of my questions answered, and I'll tell you, there are a lot of highlights in this budget, in particular, I love that there's, we've got an increase of salaries budgeted, we're decreasing the general administrative salaries, we've got a partial restoration of our reserves, which we've seen from the latest summary from our bond folks, that we need that in order to maintain our bond rating and comply with board policy. I was also delighted to see the robotics funding available there for schools who wish to continue developing or enhancing their programs. We've seen that program come a long way in the last couple of years. Now, a couple of things I've thrown out as, for review or for consideration moving into the final budget, that I'd like to just share with the board and the public, so you kind of know what, what I've been asking about. One is the funding for art and music programs. I know that we have, we have... I know that we have, we have a number of new programs that are now off the ground with our new enrichment requirements and allocations formula, and my concern is that we might leave some of these programs. It's kind of an unfunded mandate to now go start an art or a music program, and you don't have, you know, you walk in as a classroom teacher and you say, I got $150 from the state or whatever the money is this year. That's obviously not enough to fund a program. So I'd like to ensure that we, as a district, aren't creating this unfunded mandate on schools and that they've got some, some places where they might be able to fund those teachers. Perhaps one avenue of that is looking at the school-based budgets. I know that last year, we had seen that there were many schools that had, that were carrying over a significant fund balance. So I don't know where, where schools are this year, and maybe some schools are able to support the needs of a new art or music program, or whether or not some schools are going to be tight on that and go, well, I'm sorry, you can go out and seek grants to do that, or look for, look to the community for support. So I'd like to take a closer look at the school-based budgets when we move into the final approval of our budget. One, one thing that did kind of pique my attention is that many of the school budgets are reduced despite projected increases in enrollments. So I'm not quite kind of entirely sure what's driving all of that. And then a couple of the things I'd like to kind of just consider is the textbook allocation, if that pot of money is going to be sufficient to meet the needs. I know that when it came this year, we found ourselves not buying science books for kindergarten through second grade. And I know that coming up, we've got social studies as an adoption year. We'll have to go back and fulfill some of the, the science needs possibly for K2. So just ensuring that we've got adequate budget for that initiative. And then a couple of things that maybe are greater conversations to talk about when we get in the auditing world, but I know that we, as a Board, had had some initial dialogue about expanding that department. If we do that, perhaps that might allocate some resources for somebody to take a look at the food service and ELC reserves. It looked like food service is sitting at a 50% fund balance, and ELC has got like a 33% fund balance. I'm just not sure if there's more that could be charged to those places to make better use of that money. Here, we're struggling to make four. They, they're sitting on 50. And it just suddenly seems out of whack there. So those are some considerations that I had given Mr. Ward at our individual meeting. And I'll share those with the Board going forward as we get closer to final approval.
Do we have a planned workshop on the budget? Other than the one we just had, the 20-minute?
So we, we have a couple of options that we were going to discuss. I don't know if we're going to do that now, want to continue with this, to discuss the workshop at the end? Okay. Yeah, so we have a workshop already scheduled for the 20th. The purpose of that meeting was to go over people progression plan, as well as a data presentation from our curriculum folks. We're looking at last year's data, where we are, our plan, our vision moving forward instructionally. I'd like to keep that a solid time and not add too much to that agenda, just knowing that, that I'd like to stay focused on, that's really going to focus on teaching and learning. So we do have a couple of other options in regards to coming back and answering questions in regard to the capital plan, because I don't think you're done with that conversation, as well as give Mr. Ward another opportunity to, again, publicly answer some questions that you may have regarding the, after you've had a chance to review the budget. So one option is, and I would need to weigh this against your timeline, I haven't looked at that, is we do have, our next regular board meeting will be the 27th of August, so we could have a workshop prior to that if you so desire. Or we could look back to the prior week of the 20th. We already have that one workshop scheduled, which, we could make it a day marathon, but it would be very long, and I don't, I'm not sure if you would like to do that. Looking at another day that week, that we could come back together for another workshop specifically to the capital plan and the budget.
The 27th will definitely give us a better opportunity to have solid ending fund balance numbers, which I think is important.
So we, we could even do it as early as four. That gives us a solid two hours if we need.
But would we do it here or there?
We would, we could do it there if the room's available. We'll have to ask Ms. Challenger to look in to see if we could do it there.
It doesn't matter. We can go from here over there.
Well, I'm just thinking if we did it a little earlier, then it would give us time to make the transition over there, so we would not be crunched for time and everybody get a ticket.
In the past, we've done like a 2 o'clock. Like, we could do a 2 o'clock and then.
Then break, and people could go get something to eat.
So work on everybody's calendar?
Okay. 2 o'clock on the 27th.
Is there further discussion?
I, as I said in the previous meeting, haven't had a chance to review this. I don't feel comfortable reporting back to my constituents on a yes vote, given that I haven't reviewed the budget.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you very much. Superintendent.
I recommend that the Board declare that the final budget hearing for the approval of final millage rates and budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year be held on Monday, September the 10th, 2018, in the Lake County Commission Chambers at 5:30 PM.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Say it. Second.
Great, so we'll give the motion to Mr. Bambal in the second toaster dot. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the Board concerning the time and the place at the final budget hearing? Okay, Board members, is there any discussion in regards to that final date? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. Superintendent.
This concludes the required action for the first public hearing on the 2018-19 tentative millage rates and budget for Lake County schools.
Board members, we are, Board Member comments, Mr. Ty.
Hold on.
Go hold.
Okay.
Triple dito.
Triple dito, okay, I have none. Superintendent?
Just, we're anxious to have our teachers back, everybody back on Friday, so welcome back.
Oh, Elizabeth, Ms. Ty, nothing? Okay, at this time, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.